Okay, so we're coming out of executive session. We're reconvening an open session. We have a couple items on a consent agenda regarding personnel. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, this was presented to us in advance. Are there any questions? Now call the roll. Mr. Podge?
Yes.
Mr. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
So now we have our work session to discuss facilities. Dr. Dixon, introduce everybody.
Good evening, everyone. So I'm gonna turn it over to Doug Myers, who's gonna be your George, who's going to lead this discussion. George?
We're gonna introduce Mr. Roca from the state and Mr. Tuckerman from Hammond Construction. They're gonna provide the board with an update and a review, basically, of the amendment that we're gonna be asking you to approve in the next month's meeting. So we put the presentation up on Board Docs for you to see previously. Jeff's gonna go through it real quickly because you've had time to review that, but he's expecting questions, and we know that you have some.
So I think, too, I know when you get started, it'd be good for the audience to be kind of tell what your roles are.
Oh, he's gonna do that.
You're gonna do that, yes?
Yeah, he does that. He does a good job of that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much again. My name's Steve Roca with the Planning Manager with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. Before Jeff goes into his remarks, I'd like to just kind of give a brief overview. I think it may answer some questions, it may open up more questions, so just give you an idea what the role of the Facilities Construction Commission is in this process. We are the result of a consolidation occurred about six years ago between what was then the School Facilities Commission and then the State Architects Office of Ohio. So in 2012, we merged largely as a result of the Construction Reform Package, but the commission, the Facilities Construction Commission continues to carry out all the duties that the School Facilities Commission was charged with, i.e. oversight of K-12 facilities, funding, and construction. There are programs which were used to carry out those duties. Some of them are funded, some are not. Briefly, the major funded programs are the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, the ENP or Exceptional Needs Program. The non-funded programs include the ALP or Exped Local Partnership Program and the Facilities Assistance Program, or FAP. ALP projects are managed by the district without the involvement of OFCC project staff. Regardless of what program the district enters with the commission, the planning principles remain the same. They're anchored in the idea of equity, which is a central underlying principle of what OFCC does in their school K-12 planning. A master facility plan is a result of condition assessments of buildings, enrollment projections, and district equity ranking, as well as OSDM cost sets. The condition assessment establishes whether OFCC will recommend replacement or renovation. In other words, the two-thirds rule. Enrollment governs the area of the buildings to be co-funded by the commission. ODE ranking establishes a district's required local share of a project, and the OSDM sets the budgets for both renovation or new construction. Under ALP, once a facility master plan and agreement with OFCC have been reached, ALP allows a district to pursue a project or projects at its own pace without the direct assistance of commission staff. The portion of work defined in the master facility plan undertaken by the school district is called the discrete portion. OFCC staff and consultants meet regularly with the district to track construction expenditures and establish amount of credit a district is accumulating through its project. Under ALP, it is not unusual to make changes to either the master facility plan or changes to the discrete portion of work during a project phase. Often times, school districts desire to build more square footage than OFCC guidelines provide for, or districts desire to add elements OFCC does not participate in funding, such as athletic facilities and auditoriums. These items are called locally funded initiatives, or LFIs. Typically, LFIs are typically included in OFCC scope of work to gain economy of scale benefits derived from large construction projects. That's kind of a brief overview of the commission's role. I obviously left out a lot, but I thought before we get into Jeff's presentation, I'm trying to anticipate some questions. So on that note, I turn it over to Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Jeff Tuckerman. I am with Hammond Construction. I head up our planning group. We are a construction management firm, and our buildings are our roots, but again, I head up the planning division. And since 2008, we have held a contract with the School Facilities Commission as the regional program consultant. There are three regional program consultants, RPCs, in the state. We have the northeast corridor of the state, and we're assigned to two or three of the planners, Steve being one. So we were intimately involved in the initial planning, excuse me, of the school district, which started about 2011. And we continue, as Steve mentioned, the tracking of the credit. So we have quarterly meetings, and we're basically just, you know, making sure that the work that was in the master plan is being complete, or if it's not, being changed, and then we just capture that credit as we go forward. So I've got just a few brief slides, and I thought what we would do, which is probably more beneficial, is to just open it up and answer your questions, because I know that there may be some questions. The planning process, it's pretty comprehensive. Your school district, you know, it's a decent-sized school district. I believe at the time, we had about seven or eight different master plans through that period of time, which brought us up to November of 2013, where the final master plan was approved by the school district, the Board of Education, and the School Facilities Commission, the commission at the time. And again, that was a complete master plan, and then from that, the discrete portion was harvested or carved out, and that's what you move forward with. And I've got a slide that I think kind of encapsulate what that discrete portion was. Excuse me. In January of 2016, as Steve mentioned, it's not unusual for the discrete portion to change throughout the process, especially if you have multiple projects within your master plan that you're implementing. Sometimes, school districts just do one project. In your case, you have three projects that you're doing. So with the end of, or towards the end of completing the high school, the district requested that we do an updated enrollment to kind of track where we were before they launched into the middle school portion of the discrete portion project, to kind of test where that enrollment was and to kind of right-size the middle schools. In 2016, those enrollment projections were completed, and in March of 2017, the district requested a revision to the master plan and the discrete portion. And again, the next slide, we'll kind of get into that a little bit more, and I think it'll be clear as to what the original plan was, and then what the changes were requested, and what's in the amendment that you have before you. The high school was completed in 2017. That, again, we track those costs throughout. We have those costs, and those are basically kind of in the file now, waiting for the two middle schools. Those will be placed in the file. That'll establish your credit, and then when you're served under the funded program, the CFAP, Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, that credit will go towards your local share for funding when the OFCC serves you. And I know there's some questions on when that might be, and I'm gonna punt that over to Steve when we get there. Again, we generated, you know, one of the things that we do is the RPC, is, you know, we take that information from the district, generate those master plans, and for amendments, we also generate those amendments. We're kind of the worker bees, where we stitch everything together, we get it down to the commission, and then they do what they do down in Columbus, and then they send the package up to you, which you have before you right now. And then we have until May of '18 for this amendment, if we are to make the July commission meeting. The commission does meet on a quarterly basis. So we were set up to make the April commission meeting. It was a little too rushed, which brings us here today, so it looks like right now we are targeting the July commission meeting, and we're hoping to provide you enough information that you're comfortable with acting on the amendment. Enrollment projections, I want to talk briefly about this. Again, this slide here is, the first column is the grade configuration, and this is how the OFCC, we kind of break things out, because typically, school districts, it's pretty traditional, PK 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. Now, you can go with combination buildings, but as we do the enrollment projections, this is kind of a snapshot of how we break the grade groupings up. The first column there is July 2013, and you can see it was a total of 5,612. That original master plan that the board approved in 2013 was based on that 5,612. The updated enrollment projections that were requested and that the amendment is based off of is April 2016, and you can see that that total was 4,921. So it was a decline of 691 students. So, you know, students dictate the size of the buildings and what the commission will fund.
Now, why are you not updating 2016 projections with actual numbers which we have for that school year, which are significantly higher?
Well, in the process for enrollment projections is the, back in 2013 for the original, so at that time, the actuals were populated or entered by the district's EMUS coordinator.
At that time?
At that time. The previous 10 years are polled in, they look at live birth, you know, survival cohort, they look at housing starts and things of that nature, then they project out 10 years. So from there, they were projecting out 10 years. For those districts that are declining over that 10-year period, which is about 98% of the districts in the state of Ohio, there's about four or five that ring Columbus that are not, for those that are declining, they take the fifth year out. So that's our planning year. So this, in 2016, they did have some of the projections that were from 2013 are now actual. The EMUS coordinator plugged in the actuals from 2016. We projected out another 10 years, and then took the fifth year out.
That would be 2020.
Right. So every year, we do not, you know, we do not capture the actuals and build to that. You have to kind of put a stake in the ground and say, you know, your enrollment, this is your projections, and here's your cost.
But if we're submitting something to the state, why wouldn't we have it be more accurate, because we now have that, you know, we have new data?
Well, it's gonna be as accurate as it can possibly be, because you're kind of fast-forwarding, but when you transition to the funded program, when your credit actually goes towards your local share, and the state says, you know, we're ready to fund you now...
For the CFAP.
For CFAP, that's correct. We're gonna update the enrollment again. So this is all gonna change again. So this is kind of, you know, a good exercise to understand how the process works, because it does change as you go on. For larger districts such as Cleveland, Akron, I mean, the Big Eight, when they went through their lives, they've probably, the lives of those programs, they've probably had their enrollment updated six, seven, eight times, and each time, they make those corrections to the projects going forward.
So our funding and what we will be, what we are capable of financially is partially determined by our enrollment, past, present, and projected, right? That's basically what we're coming down to, that the state of Ohio determines how much they may kick in.
That is correct. It's the enrollment drives the scope of the project in a fundamental way, yes.
So this is interesting to me, because as we look at July 2013, we are currently in April of 2018, and, you know, we need to connect dots. I'm an educator, and I like to point things out to the community that I think are very important. In 2013 was sort of the tip of the iceberg on school choice. And as we look at these numbers, ladies and gentlemen, we point out to the community at every one of our regular board meetings that we currently lose about $8.5 million to the different school choice hijackings, is the word I use, which I think is appropriate. So that's something that we see every single month in our budget, but there are many other impacts of school choice on our district, and what we're seeing here is a brand-new one, to my eyes, at least. It's yet another layer of the onion that is school choice and the impact that school choice is having on what we are able to provide to our students today and in the future. Thank you.
This slide here is, I think it's an important slide, and it's my attempt to take, you know, if you look at the original master plan and discrete portion, that package, and then the amendment that you have in front of you, there's a tremendous amount of data there. You know, there was a tremendous amount of work leading up to, you know, finalizing that initial master plan. The, you know, your buildings were assessed, they were reassessed, we walked through with your district staff, your architectural team, we validated that assessment, we changed that assessment, some things that we believe were incorrect in the original assessment. So it was really good process, in my opinion. So there was a lot of work there, and there's a lot of data. But here's my attempt to take the three projects that are in the discrete portion. So we generated a complete master plan, but then we focused on the three projects that the district wanted to complete under their discrete portion, which was Cleveland Heights High School, Monticello, and Roxborough Middle School. So it was your 612 population. And just to the right of Cleveland Heights High School there, each one of these categories are the same, it's selective demo square footage. So in each one of these projects, from, this is the original master plan, we were demolishing portions of the building, renovating the remaining portions of the building, and then providing additions based on the student-projected enrollment to right-size that. So you take the existing square footage, and then base that on the number of students, the square foot per student allocation, it determines the size of addition that you get. The second was the remaining existing square footage, and again, after demolition, that's the square footage that gets renovated, the new addition square footage, and then the total. So the total is the remaining square footage and the new addition. So that was what was remaining for that project, the budget, and then the potential credit. And the potential credit is, of that budget, that value right there is what the OFCC will provide credit for, and if it was a funded program, it would be co-funding. So that would be scope that they would agree in their program, that they would share in the co-funding cost of. So each one of those are the same. The second column is the original master plan in October 2013. So the high school, you can see, it was 330,880. That was how much was demolished from that building, pieces taken down. And then 168,359 remained. We were putting 164,795 square foot addition on there for a total of 33,144. Now, that building is bigger than that 33,144.
I was about to ask, the actual construction numbers are quite a bit different.
It's bigger than that. And it's bigger than that is because what I'm showing here is creditable.
Got it.
So this is basically square foot per kid?
Right.
Exactly. It's our co-funding model.
So you just have a spreadsheet, and we put in the number of children, and this is what is allowed?
Yes, right.
Okay, and what we actually do is what our community decides to do.
That is correct. You had locally funded initiative, you had additional square footage. I believe you have a pool and some other things in that building. Some of that was square footage that they don't fund. They don't do fixed-seat auditoriums, they don't do naditoriums, and you funded that. It's probably, you know, unusual for a school district that is in their program to not have some sort of LFI. It may be material upgrades, it may be some square footage, maybe it's 5,000 square feet, maybe it's 50,000 square feet, but that's what that represents right there. Next column over is the amendment. So you see the high school there doesn't change. So this amendment doesn't affect the high school, that project is completed, so that's why those numbers don't change. But let's go down to Monticello down below. So Monticello, we were demolishing 21,504. There was 137,308 remaining. There was no addition provided, so that was a total of 137,308. You see the budget, and then you see the creditable amount of that budget. The July 2008 is, nothing's been demolished. We're keeping the entire building, which is 158,512. And you see the potential budget of 16.01 million, and the potential credit is 11 million. So the potential credit went down.
Correct.
Okay?
But we knew that when we were discussing...
Right, exactly.
The changes to the scope of the project.
Yes, exactly. And then Roxborough is, there was an addition onto Roxborough, so if you follow that logic down, there was 26,000 square foot addition onto Roxborough, but now, we are not demolishing any of the building, we're not providing any addition back, and you see the $15 million, there's $10 million in credit. Now, what I do want to point out, and I think the board knows this, is that in the October, the portions of the building that were remaining, it was full renovation scope. And when I say that is, there's A-through-W line items, everything from your heating system, roofs, technology, furniture, and they have dollars associated with scope. In the original master plan, all of that was being completed. So we were demolishing those pieces of the building, new addition, completely fit out, all the renovation dollars in there. Now, we're not demolishing those portions, we're keeping it, and then we're doing limited, it's not really limited, there's quite a bit of renovation in there, but that's really what's accounting for the credit there, that there's not as much cost in there, scope in there than there originally was. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. But again, that's, I think, that's about as simplistic as I can get a complex set of documents, because they're both very complex. As you get into them, there's a lot of numbers, there's a lot of data, and everybody that's really into numbers and figures and datas and formulas, you're gonna love this. So have at it.
Well, it's the number equivalent of a boilerplate contract, right? Somebody, not me, thank God, spent an awful lot of time writing those spreadsheets and putting all the formulas in, and then it just rolls through.
Right.
And what we need to remember is that that is the state's idea of what construction for schools should involve...
It's their standards, yes.
Right, and again, what the district and the community and the voters wanted are a different set of standards. So we're always going to have a gap.
Right, yes, exactly. In fact, when the commission was formed in 1997, one of their charges was they were to develop. It says in the legislation, they are to develop standards, which they did. It's called the Ohio Design Manual. It's a huge document. It's a really, really good document. I worked at Kent State for 25 years, and we didn't have the staff. We were trying to get to where their document is. We just didn't have the resources, but it's something that you can give to your design team, you can give to the design team and work with the district's staff, and it's a great document for that standard. But again, you can, it's the minimum, and you can certainly exceed that if you wish, and most districts do provide something to do.
Well, at the whole beginning of our construction process, I can't remember the name of the firm who was in working on the program of requirements, the POR, we, you know, we saw endless spreadsheets with the state requirements, and then those all got jiggered around with other formulas and spreadsheets in order to get to where we thought we should be, and then all that got rejiggered again with what we could afford. So there's, again, it's always a moving target.
Yes. I believe, you know, I was with the commission from '99 to 2007, so I was on his side, working alongside him, now I work for him, so, but I've been doing this for 20 years, since the commission was formed, or about 15 months after the commission was formed. And the standards have changed since then. I believe, and I tell a lot of districts this, I told my home district this, that I believe that the OFCC standards are the floor, not the ceiling. I believe that that's the minimum that you should want for your children, that's me. And for those that don't participate in the state's program, that's fine, but those that do, typically, I think they view it, too, as the floor, not the ceiling, and that's the minimum, and they typically go a little bit above and beyond that. But they're good standards, they really are. Okay. There was, I think, they wanted to talk a little bit about funding transition from ALP to CFAP. So, you know, again, we're gonna answer any detailed questions that you may have on the amendment itself, but when that transition occurs, I'm gonna defer what that timeline may be, which is the first bullet item there, to Steve in a minute, and run, kind of run through these other ones. But as you transition, again, we're gonna update the enrollment. The one thing that's locked in is your 85%, because when you're into ALP, you lock in, and that's the good thing, because as you move on that equity list and move to a higher share percentage, it doesn't matter where you're at, because you are locked into that 85% local share right now, so the state's committed to their share percentage. Again, we'll update the enrollment, cost sets will be updated, and we will really do the same thing that we did with this plan, and that is, buildings that are existing, and there was a question as to, well, why does the complete master plan show our middle schools as a 4/8 building? It's because the state, we have to utilize all available square footage that is going to house K-12 students. So your middle schools and your high school are, obviously, they're viable candidates to stay online, so we have to fill the buildings up, for lack of a better term. So your high school now has square footage that we have to put students in, and in order to fill the building up to its capacity before the state will commit to new square footage, we have to put, on paper, we have to put some of the middle school kids in there. And then when you do that, it limits your middle school kids, so now we have to, since we're keeping the entire building for the middle school, we have to put fourth and fifth graders in there, again, on paper, and it's an exercise that determines the state's credit to you. It doesn't say that's what you're going to do, but what it does, it establishes what's the state's credit, because we know that you're gonna put 6/8 in those middle schools.
Yeah, so it's a simulation.
Yes, it is.
Basically, that is what, so it sounds to me that it's a simulation that will justify how much the state may eventually...
Yes, sir. Yes, and they do that because before they will share in the cost to build new, they want to maximize the existing. And quite frankly, the cost to renovate a facility is lower than a cost to build new. So that's, but we will do the same thing. When you transition to CFAP, we'll update the enrollment, and we will go through the same exercise, and then the remaining elementary students will be what they would fund, should you want to move forward with a project. So right now, you see some of the elementary buildings that don't have students in there, and it's not to say that those must come offline, but what it's saying is, there's not enough students where the state is gonna provide you credit for. So we don't want to, we don't want to show that you're gonna get a credit and then tell you four years down the road when you're served under CFAP that you're not getting that credit. We want to show you how that works now.
The basement.
Exactly. So it's not to say you have to take the buildings offline, it's not to say that you can't put different student populations in there, it's just their planning principles in action.
Okay, so I just want to say that very clearly, that this in no way reflects a commitment on our part to mirror these grade bandings or these building vacancies.
That's correct.
Okay.
That is absolutely correct.
Because we're already getting heat about that.
No.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to take a step back. So the amendment that was shared with us, list buildings that were signing a document that basically says we're gonna abandon, and go with grade configurations that I know that are gonna be very difficult for members of our community to accept. Is there a way that we can put some language in this amendment to reflect that this is based on simulation? I mean, I hate, I mean, so for example, part of our process, when we came to in 2013, was to keep an elementary school in University Heights. This one closes, this one basically says to abandon one of our buildings in University Heights, that I know for that community, as of right now, with the data that we have, and that an old board decided on, I don't think we feel comfortable with that. Now, we are gonna go through a process, and actually, it's part of our retreat, where we're working with city officials to rework on our master plan, just so we can better utilize our buildings based on enrollments. I mean, so for example, we've got Wiley next door, beautiful building, lots of middle schoolers in that building right now. We need to find a purpose for that building, and we also have other buildings that we have listed that we're gonna close, based on a 2013 decision. We're revisiting... We're, we're revisiting that. Can we put something maybe in this document that we are revisiting that, but keeping mindful of your square footage?
What we can do is actually create a, a plan, a facility plan, that would show what your intentions are and how that aligns with the community. We'll call that the preferred plan. What we're showing in this amendment is what we're calling the fundable plan, or the base plan. So if the comparison between those two, the cost comparison, will then be what's, we'll call that project agreement, LFI, locally funded initiative. So yes, we can do that and address those concerns that way.
Okay.
It wouldn't necessarily be, and that, the language would all spell that out.
Yeah, because the way the scope of project is currently described, it, you know, we would be signing to a com- and a commitment to do these things.
A much different plan that was contemplated five years ago.
Which is not at all, we don't know yet what our final plan will be.
And, and that's pretty normal, honestly, in, in the course of these proj- projects, especially ALP, which is, as we're taking all the little bites of the apple, things, we're gonna change, obviously enrollment. So, and, and yes, you know, we could, and when we come back around, we'll do another projection, it may in fact be more favorable. So we may be co-funding bigger parts, or there's less burden on the district for those pieces of the building you're keeping, particularly middle schools.
And when he says he's gonna give you that, he means I'm, I'm gonna be.
Excellent.
That, see how this works?
Well, yeah, well, it's, it, it's, it's good work.
Beats the alternative.
Yeah, well, that's very true. Um, I, I wanna make sure, just because there are cameras and these people in the community tend to watch these meetings.
Hard hours of the night.
I mean, one of the intentions of this reviewing the master facilities plan is to understand more about what the community is looking for in these buildings. This isn't a decision that's been made in one retreat. It's, it's hashing out a process that we can engage our community and our elected leaders. We've got two meetings set with our, um, well, not yet with the city of Cleveland Heights, but with University Heights, where we'll be discussing with them the process that we'll be going through to revisit our master facilities plan. Because this has to be a, a, a plan that the community buys into, um, as opposed to one that is just, I mean, like, on, on paper, I mean, what, what you write, uh, as far as the scope of the project, I mean, makes all the sense in the world on paper, but I'm not sure, um, our community, who is funding the majority of the local share, would, would support something like this. Okay, so you could work with us on the language that would be ideal.
Yeah, we, yeah, we will, we will generate, and it's, it's not uncommon to generate, the, the base plan, which establishes the shares, funding levels, the, the discrete portion, what you're doing, then the preferred plan, which is really, the preferred plan is kind of like the complete master plan. As, as of today, that's the vision for the district. I got it.
Yeah, and I know this was a big issue with, um, our board member that is on attendance on our speakerphone. So, Jody, I hope you've heard this, and do you have any thoughts, additional thoughts regarding this topic?
No, I mean, thank you. I've heard all the discussion, and I appreciate the fact that we're gonna add some language, because, um, I admit, I was uncomfortable with this as it was, and I didn't understand it was a simulation. So, um, I think that adding that additional language is very, very important. I was also concerned, because one of our buildings wasn't even mentioned at all in, and it was one that we're actively using. So, um, I appreciate the additional explanation.
Good. Perfect.
So, uh, I'm sorry, George, as we continue, also speaking to those people who watch these, these, uh, at home, just to help them, um, if they're, if you can periodically, you, you know, explain the acronyms, because we use so many of them in education overall, and this is a whole new corner of the world, that I just think it'll help our community as they do dial in.
Right.
That, that would be appreciated.
Well, I, yeah, I think, I think one was LFI, which is locally funded initiative. And again, those are the things that the state does not provide funding for, but the district wishes to provide for.
Just the swimming pool at the high school.
Such as the swimming pool, additional square footage, material upgrades, yes. And if, if you do it in the course of the project, it's gonna, you're gonna get the best cost benefit for, for your dollars. PA LFI, which is project agreement LFI, that, it's, 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 it's given the name project agreement, think of it as a required LFI. It's, it's scope that is contained in the project agreement with the School Facilities Commission, because it's work that must be done in conjunction with the complete project, but the, the state doesn't share in costs. So, for example, if you're keeping an auditorium in a building and you're renovating the entire building, you can't separate that when you take out the entire heating system, electrical system, you have to re-feed that. They don't fund fixed seat auditoriums. So those costs are, are, uh, calculated. And then they're called project agreement LFIs. And again, because they're contained in the project agreement, but anytime you hear PA LFI, think of required.
Now, there's a $2 million roughly, $700,000 line for LFI in one of your documents. What was that money for? Is, is that the football field?
Now, you're getting into the weeds.
Yeah, I am. I spent way too much time reading this stuff, so I have, I have the right to answers. And of course, I'm supposed to remember where it was. Uh, paragraph I, subsection B of the actual contract.
Give the page number.
Yeah, you, the detail is not, it's just gonna spell out what's in the, the plan, the page that Jeff is leafing through, but the specifics we'll find for you in a second.
Okay. So that's page, page, page what?
I'm gonna guess it's probably auditoriums that you have at Roxborough, Monticello, as well as the high school, as part of it. May not capture, capture everything, but that'd probably be a chunk of it.
Okay. Because I remember $3 million-ish being the football field on the high school, and I won- was wondering if this is actual past numbers, or this is projected future work?
Um, well, it's gonna be what we've captured for the credit for the high school, as well as the, what's contemplated for the, both the middle schools.
So it's both, okay. Both actual and future.
It would not include athletic facilities, because the world, those are, in the world of LFIs, it's the, the discreet ones are outs, you know, outside our funding model, yet done at the same time.
So this would not include the football field, then? It would be other things, mostly auditoriums?
Exactly. If you look at page 22 on the discrete portion, um, master plan.
Discrete.
It's, it's a listing of the, um, PA LFIs, project agreement LFIs, again, required LFIs, that, that are included in that total.
Page 23 is the last page.
Right. And, um, you do see the auditorium for the, or the, yeah, the auditorium renovations for the high school.
Yep.
And again, that's, that's captured, uh, in there. We have, um...
So that's the $700,000-ish?
$785,000, that's correct.
Okay. So that would be included in that, uh...
That's correct.
Two million, eight hundred thousand.
Mont- Monticello also has a fixed seat auditorium, and there's $408,000 in there for that.
Middle has $770,000. Okay.
Right. So, that's, that's where that listing is that adds up. Now, you're gonna see in there some negative numbers also. And you're also gonna see some negative numbers in the page in front of that, which is the, um, specific allowance. And what we're, what we're deducting out of there is the lead allowance. Okay? And that was one of the questions, was why, why are we deducting it out? Why is it in, then why is it come out? The, the OFCC, I mentioned, they have some really cool tools. Their master planning, all of this stuff, is, it's a web-based tool. We pull in the assessments, and then we're able to take your, your, uh, student population and start placing them where we want them, not where I want them, but where we're, you know, based on the grade configurations. Um, and we place them in there. One of the things that is automatic in their program is, for square footage that exists, it gets a lead allowance. Okay? And all of their schools, whether new or, uh, existing, um, the requirement from the OFCC is meet lead silver. So there's dollars in there for that. Well, we have excess space in most all of your buildings. This is part of the good process, too, because as we went through the original assessment, that really wasn't captured. But as we got together with your, your, your site staff, the architects, they brought forward that, you know, there are some basement areas, some attic areas, that were captured in the total square footage, that were really unusable space. Well, if you don't separate that out and basically subtract that from the total, then what you're saying is you can place students in there.
Right, we can't put students in the attics.
Exactly. However, however, we still need, we still need to provide life safety in those spaces. And in, in some of the spaces, like crawl spaces and, and whatnot, the code requires that you have minimal ventilation, fire alarm, and things of that nature. So we wanna make sure we keep that, uh, that cost in there for that, but we subtract out the square footage. But the system doesn't know, there's no way to tell it that this is unusable space, don't put the lead allowance in. If it's square footage, it puts the lead allowance in automatically. So if it's in there, we take it out. So that's why...
That's why the same numbers came in as positive and negative.
That's, that's correct.
And that space, that's not student space.
And if, and if we didn't do that, then it would skew the total cost and, and everything. So that's why that's coming out. Also, we took all of the lead out for the middle schools. You'll notice. And that's because there was a lead waiver for that. So I started this conversation out by saying that, that you had to, you know, whether new or renovated, you, it had to be lead silver certified, but we got a waiver on that. So once we get the waiver, the only way to, um, you know, balance out the, the right scope is to basically put a negative number in there to take it out. The, the system just isn't smart enough to, to account for all of those things. So there is some data entry required.
Okay, thank you.
And believe me, Steve has gone over these numbers, and we've gone back and forth, and, and they balance. So what I'm taking out was the right stuff.
Today.
Today. Today, yeah.
So, moving on to the CFAP program, where we're actually funded, you know, literally the million dollar question is, when we started this project in 2013, sort of the rough estimate at the time was, we'd be able to get on the list in five years. Well, a number of years have gone by.
Five.
Five years down the road. I mean, we, we know it's not gonna be five years. But, uh, a district like ours, where we're on the list, are you able to project when we should look at when we can get this credit? Well, we have the credit, we can actually get the money.
Yeah.
Which is 15% of the credit, by the way, just, just because it's not the full credit.
Right.
He needs to be a financial guy.
It, it is the, literally, you're right, the million dollar question. And what's happened in that five years since we first visited, we've kinda become victims of our own success. We started this outreach process, which used to be an annual event, the district interested in participating in funding, maybe preparing for funding offer. Typically, that was a one-year process, we'll call that planning. So a district that would enter, or we outreach, say you're interested, sure, we wanna get in, and it's July of the year, let's just use this current one, 2018, and then maybe looking at funding them in July of 19. Well, we started going to having these events quarterly. So what's happened is, the more often we've cast a net, the more districts have gotten in the line for the planning queue. Result of all this is, the commitment from the legislature financially has been about the same, $300 million a year for K-12 construction. But the districts in the planning queue has increased, to the point where we have 100 districts, close to it, that if we had money, they'd be ready to go. So, and so we're telling districts now that are, when we outreach, and you could be outreach in, in a year or so, but I'm thinking it's gonna be more than that, um, is probably a two to three-year wait for the funding to come, because it's, it's just that much of a bubble to get through.
Okay, so the district is putting, not the district, the state is putting about 300 million in?
Correct.
Which is half of our project?
And that...
Double our project, sorry.
Right, but when you look at it in terms of the state's commitment, as a percentage, it's, we should be capturing more districts. Yes, so we're probably doing 10 to 15 districts on average per year. So that's a substantial difference between what's happened in the past five years. So yes, we've been very busy, and it's, but however, it's created this backlog of work compared to funding levels. So we...
So, again, just ballparking it, 10 to 15 districts, so you're, that you're funding, and you have 100 on the list?
Yes. Yeah, and not, no, 100 may go forward, but we're, I'm pretty sure there's at least 50 that are gonna be, are serious contenders. And so you're talking two, three, five years probably. And that's, assumes you get outreach in the next year or two. And that's where we're actually gonna suspend this quarterly outreach process for at least a year, to see, to get, do, do this bubble.
So, and, at, at the $88 million that is our total potential credit, of which we might get 15%.
So that's $13 million on a good day, if we're lucky.
And that would go into, Scott, that would be 13 million into, not into... Be into phase two of the project. So would be $13 million toward...
Towards the elementaries.
Whatever the...
It would require us getting funding for the elementary schools to get, to receive that money from the state.
I see. So, okay.
So we only get the $13 million if...
We go out and do the elementary schools.
We do, um, a project for phase two, and then that would be credited towards that?
Right, that's what it was explained, if I'm not mistaken. We have to go back out and do the elementary schools to receive that money.
Thinking there may be, if you would just, here's where it gets interesting, because yeah, there's also this feature called segmenting, which shouldn't exist early on in a program. Other words, we're funding the entire district fix. So the segmenting change allowed us to take smaller chunks of the district master plan. So if we could create a segment that was what you built, could we write you a check for that sec- that segment? Perhaps.
Say, the high school, 'cause it's done. And we have hard numbers now. We have the actuals on everything.
Yep.
And people, by the way, love the building, just saying, okay? It's a beautiful building that's saved with love to fund.
Yeah, you've completed a project.
Yeah.
You've already, you've already completed a, you've, you've completed one. I mean, that's, that's, that's a deal.
Well, I think it would be very helpful if our team can explore that with you folks. When we walked into this in 2013, it was clearly the intent that we would have to do phase two before we would see any monies from the state. And as we are working through our phase, what, our master plan to do phase two, um, it would be helpful to have this information, if, if there's a way to segment some, some of this.
The segmenting does require a building to be a complete fix, so a partial renovation will not qualify. However, if you've completed the building, that would be the way we could anchor.
And is there an equivalent or a similar program that would be eligible for the work that we do on the elementaries, like we did to the high schools, to be eligible for this?
You could, you could continue on in ALP. You could continue on in ALP, yes.
But to get the part for the hu- for the high school and middle schools, we have to do elementaries, is there a similar switch, you know, is there something that we have to do to be eligible to get that?
The credit from the elementary schools?
Yes. Or would that just come to help offset what the community's...
Well, in, in the, in theory, you could complete your entire district-wide master plan under ALP and receive credit for that when, when they offer you funding under the CFAP program.
And if that large check were to appear, could we, Scott, just throw that towards the bond and pay it down? How would that work? If it came after all of the construction is done?
Well, I, we would, we would have to look at that. I would assume that it would be, have to be kept for facilities.
For buildings, for facilities, right.
For improvement.
But whether or not it could be used to, to pay down existing bond debt?
Since we floated a bond specifically for construction, that's all I'm saying, you know, cash shows up at the end, then you start paying down your debt.
I, I think the, the person you wanna ask is your bond counsel, to get clarity on that. But I think it has to stand the umbrella of a facility project that we would fund.
Yeah, okay. Scott, in our retreat, um, can, can you maybe get the answer for that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And also be prepared to talk about our bond borrowing limits. There, like, 'cause...
That's a really interesting question, Jody.
That's a limiting factor, literally, that we have to be aware of.
Jody's not here. She is, she's over there in the green lights.
So I do have a question, if you don't mind. Just because Mr. Posh brought it up, and Steve was kind enough to volunteer Jeff to do this. Who's going to provide the preferred plan to Jeff so he can create it? And how does that affect your timeline? Do you have, you don't have a preferred plan in your hands right now that you're aware of, I would assume?
I bet I have one that's pretty close.
Pretty close, okay.
Yeah, we'd want you to look at it and see if we're on target, if we're, to tell us what you need to be corrected.
I think what I'm hearing is Fairfax is, is in. If you look at the original master plan, Fairfax wasn't in that one either, for whatever reason. But so Fairfax is, if you want Fairfax in, then that's, obviously, that's one that would be pulled in. But what, I guess, yeah, what I would need to know, and it's real simple, you can take this master plan, the complete master plan, and just mark it up as to Boulevard Elementary, PK five, X number of students. Okay, it's that simple. Yeah, you give that to me, and that's what I will show. And again, it's not going to, it's not going to affect what the state is going to contribute. And it really goes to, I mean, the start of our conversation, and that is, the master plan that you have establishes the credit that they will provide. What we're going to create is, this is where you want to be.
So, why don't we put together, I mean, we could hash some of the, I mean, I think there's some draft information we can go over with you, but we do have a retreat coming up, we can-
Get that. What's, what date would you prefer this back?
Well, as soon as-
So you can incorporate that.
Yeah, as soon as possible. What I'm going to do is, I have a, I have a preferred plan that's in draft form that I'll send to you. And I bet that's going to be closer than, maybe closer than what you realize, but then take that, because it's definitely closer than this. Take that, work with the board, the staff, or whatever, and then get it back to me.
Okay.
So, is there a, so this is for your July meeting, or your commission's July meeting, and it was set for April. Is there, if we miss this date, is there an issue? And is there a reason why this needs to be on your agenda for your July date?
Not really.
We would go October.
We'd go October.
We would go October. Because it's ALP, there's flexibility in it. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
I mean, we could go in October in theory with this amendment, and next year you could say, we decided to change something, and we would work with you to do that. So, under ALP, it's pretty flexible. If it were CFAP, then that's a little bit different.
Understand.
Because there's a stake in the ground on that, and that, you know, that funding is, state money is being applied now, really, you're paying for everything right now, so it's just a matter of, you know, how much of what you're buying is creditable.
We will have, in fact, this month, we're implementing the cost set for 2018. So the amendment we're looking at is actually 2017. We'd probably keep the same cost set for convenience for the, either July, well, no, we're going for July, but as well as for the October meeting.
It really doesn't matter what cost set we use, because the total cost to renovate those middle schools, we're doing a discrete portion of it, which is not uncommon. You're doing a discrete portion. So it doesn't matter if we have 2018 cost set, or quite frankly, 2014, because we're under that with what we're doing. So that doesn't matter.
But once I receive that, we'll work on it during the retreat, and then I'll get it back to you.
I'll send it to you first thing tomorrow.
Okay.
But I think, I think it's going to be a lot closer than what you may realize. And then you just tell me. I'll develop whatever you want. I would like to say one thing, too. You know, I mentioned a little bit about the enrollment process, and where the OFCC has, for those larger school districts, over their period of time, they've updated the enrollment. I know Akron started out at about thirty-five students, they're down to about twenty-some right now, and they've had multiple, you know, so they track it as they go along. You, as a school district, came to the state and said, before we launch into the middle school, we'd like to test where our enrollment is, to make sure that, you know, the decisions and the assumptions that we were making three years ago were right. That was, that was very, very wise. It really was. I think that it's put you in a better position than had you not done that. And because you're ALP, the state isn't going to come in and say, you should do this, but you were, you know, savvy enough to know where you were at, to ask that. And I think that was very, very wise.
Yeah, it helps us both, because I've had to work through these amendments on other districts, not mine that I'm working on personally, but like seven, eight years' worth of changes. And it's very difficult to recreate all that and boil it down to a couple slides to present in a commission meeting. So it's a lot of it, so I think this is a good process, you know, where, yes, we're of course correcting, so to speak, and eventually, we're going to get to where we want to go. But it's a good point to know that we're certainly different-
Very good.
-from where we were four years ago.
So, I didn't say anything else in your presentation, did you have any-
No, this is, yeah, actually, it's-
Questions? Do we have any other questions?
I do not.
Jody, do you have any thoughts, additional questions?
No additional questions, keep moving. I don't want to keep the rest of the staff there too late.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay, the next on the list is our report from our Equity Task Force.
Yes, it's coming on up. So the part, if you remember, when we adopted this equity policy, part of the policy, the very end, it stated that the superintendent would update the board at least twice a year with where we are with our equity policy. So this is one of those, we're using this opportunity to update you on where we are. And I turn it over to Dr. Womack to-
Give us a couple minutes to get set up.
Yes, give us a couple minutes to get set up. So if you pull up, we have a PowerPoint presentation that is attached. If you want to pull that up on your-
There's three different ones?
Yeah, if you look at the presentation, and one is the lead tool, one is the actual policy, and then one is the PowerPoint presentation.
Got it. The presentation has, like the lead tool, and for example.
So, and here's some documents for it, too, yeah. Let me just pass out, I don't even have to pull it up here. And before we transition, I want to make one more note from the last presentation. So I made notes here that we will, since we have our retreat coming up, April 26, I think is a good idea to use that preferred plan that he's going to provide with George, and we use that as a start-
And use that as a starting point.
As a starting point.
Because what's currently in the document is like, eh!
Right, right, right. But I think so. I appreciate that, giving us something that we didn't anticipate that we're going to get, but it would definitely give us a good starting point.
Yeah. Thrilled that they can do that and put us on a select or amended thing to see if we can receive the monies any sooner, that would be even better.
So, I should turn this to you instead of still carrying it around?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, we have a break. Can the audience hear us pretty well tonight? Okay, good.
Trying to be loud.
You're not getting better.
Thank you for your patience, we appreciate it. We have some new laptops that we are currently addressing and dealing with right now, so sometimes it's a little bit long to load up.
So as we transition this one, tomorrow night, I'll make a quick announcement. So, you know, we have the, our Communities in Schools Task Force, we did move that to six o'clock, and we also moved it to the high school, so when that is over, we can transition right into the spelling bee, because we want to see our team win tomorrow night, the board team. We'll have future board members.
Board team has to make it past the third round, and that's all that is required for victory.
You guys feeling healthy?
Yeah.
Because you don't want your alternate to have to step in.
I may be developing a cough.
Please be healthy.
So just know that that meeting will, so we'll all be at the high school tomorrow at six o'clock, so that'll be-
Good. We'll be eating sandwiches at six o'clock and listening to our instructions, right, Krista?
Yes, yes.
She does a fine job of that.
So, thank you very much for this opportunity to have a chance to present this evening on the Leadership for Equity and Assessment Development Tool. This evening, I have three of my Equity Task Force members with me. Directly to my right is Ms. Lisa Hunt-
I'm sorry, it was to-
Family Engagement Specialist. To her right, I have Mrs. Rachel Coleman, our Principal of Noble Elementary School. And to my far right, I have Mr. James Kravitz, who's an intervention specialist at the Cleveland Heights University Heights High School, also a member of our Equity Task Force. In front of you, you will have a copy of the District Equity Policy, which is 4122.03, as well as a copy of our presentation. You'll also find in that packet two of the constructs that we use from the Leadership for Equity and Assessment and Development Tool. A few years back, and it seems like it was just recently, Dr. Dixon, the Board of Education, and the Cleveland Heights community came up with a five-year strategic plan. Part of that five-year strategic plan were five specific goals. The Equity and Assessment Goal fell under Educational Approach, Equity, Empowerment, and Opportunities. And one of the main crux of that Educational Approach and Opportunity Goal, number two, was to close the academic achievement gaps, which we have here in the district. I hate to use that term, academic achievement gaps, I would much rather say, current levels of performance of our students in comparison to where we are in the state and with other subgroups throughout the district. There were many steps that we had listed at that time in order to address that. Part of that was for principals to come up with building-level action plans, in order to sit down and to look at their data, in order to find out where they were with the current levels of performance, with the multiple subgroups that they had within their buildings. Another was the development of the Equity Task Force, in order for us to come up with specific goals and criteria that we could use in order to start looking at and getting deeper into why do we have these current levels of performance. Some of those action steps included creating and scheduling opportunities for cross-cultural discussions throughout the year, offering quarterly professional development sessions on equity, and using what we called a train-to-trainer model to build staff capacity to facilitate quarterly and trimester discussions on cultural competency. One of the main things that came about as a result of that Educational Approach goal was the development of an equity policy, and that policy you have in front of you. I've always said, if it's not on paper, it doesn't exist. And Dr. Dixon, along with our Equity Task Force, spent ample time looking at a variety of equity policies across the nation, and came up with a policy that we thought fit best with the Cleveland Heights University Heights organizational culture. Our objectives this evening are pretty clear. One of the main things we wanted to do is to provide you a yearly update on the district equity work, share the findings from the Leadership for Equity and Assessment Development Tool, explain the process used to determine our level of equitable practices based on survey results, and discuss the next steps in regards to the Equity Task Force as a result of the findings from using the LEED tool. What you have here is a visual that we often use in regards to education, empowerment, and opportunity. A lot of people are under the impression that education or equity is equal. We recognize that equity is to try to find out where people actually are, and meeting them where they are to fit those needs. And so we use this as a visual representation quite often.
Dr. Womack mentioned Board Policy 4122.03, Section D. And really, it's, it enables us to look at the analysis tool, it talks about that tool. We're here tonight to give you an update on it, but the Equity Analysis Tool has the capacity to help leadership learn and begin to dialogue, how to enter into this era of difficult conversations. It also helps expand educational opportunities, improve building climate, and aim for more equitable outcomes. It is a responsive tool, that's one of the things that is great about it. It not only helps us to look at our policies, but our practices, our programs, and it provides us information and ways to bring all stakeholders into the conversation, sometimes difficult conversations. But that includes our families and community members. So using a rubric rating, we can access relevant resources that meet us where we are, because we're all at different entry points and different experiences. This is a powerful way, because, it's a powerful opportunity, because it allows us to dig deeper into the ongoing work of self-reflection and growth, which is where it starts. And also, not only personally, but looking at ourselves professionally, but looking at ourselves organizationally, and continue to, continue how we service and support our students importantly. So we talked about educational acronyms, so moving forward, you're going to hear us refer to the LEED tool, and the LEED tool stands for Leadership for Equity Assessment and Development. So moving forward, we'll just refer to it as the LEED tool. So we selected the tool because it gives us a way to assess our current work as an equity team, but it can also be driven down into our schools. There are four different areas in the LEED tool, so as you will experience tonight, we'll give you an opportunity to go through that. There are four areas that you can be rated as, and one is Little or No Implementation, Emerging Equitable Practice, Proficient Equitable Practice, or an Exemplary Equitable Practice. The Professional Growth Tool was designed to support leadership teams. We are hoping that all of our schools will also be able to use the tool. And each equitable practice, like I said, has four levels, but it was created by the Oregon Leadership Network of Education at Northwest, and adopted by equity practitioners. What's important is that we didn't want to go into this work without having something to drive us that was research-based.
So, as was just mentioned, the Leadership, the LEED tool is the Leadership for Equity and Assessment and Development Tool. And there's a very handy website that kind of provides us with like a home base, not only provides access to the rubrics that we're going to use, but also has, you know, a wealth of resources on each equitable practice. And there's ten equitable practices that are on this website. But as a district this year, our focus is on two of these equitable practices, which is constructing and enacting an equity vision, and collaborating with families and communities. And Mr. Womack is clicking on one of the links, Collaborating with Families and Communities. And as you look down through this page, each, each practice is broken down into subheadings. So there's three subheadings. And, you know, for constructing and enacting an equity vision, there's inclusive practice, there's collective ownership and collective responsibility. And we rank ourselves and where we stand as a district in these areas, and how we can improve in these areas, and what we can do to build on them and start dialogue, as was previously mentioned. And we rate these as, ourselves as either Little or No Equitable Practice, Emerging Equitable Practice, Proficient Equitable Practice, and Exemplary Equitable Practice. And this website not only provides us the opportunity to rate ourselves, but it also gives you room to cite evidence for, you know, the decisions that we do make.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So, this seems like a really great way of tracking the data, and you mentioned district-wide. Is, so we're really not looking at this, are we looking at any deeper than the district? This is a big district with lots of-
That's a great question.
-complicated, moving parts, with many different people's thoughts that I'm sure on one end of the city, they're going to think that, oh, we've got this equity thing mastered. On the other end of the city, it's like, oh, no, no, you may think you have it mastered, you're not even close. So is this, are you looking at this, at what level are you looking at this?
So one of the things, Mr. Posh, that we found out is, as a result of the variety and the range and the breadth and depth of what we have here in Cleveland Heights University Heights, that we need to find a way to get this tool out to more individuals. And what you'll find from our results this year is that we're continuing to refine and reflect our practices based on, how can we get more people to utilize this tool, so we have more input in regards to what our current levels of practices are right now. We were surprised with some of the results, but then when we looked at our population size, we recognized there were a lot of people that we didn't actually get to, and there were things that we didn't do collectively as a group in order to ensure. We developed and started using, or excuse me, we developed, we started using the Equity Analysis Tool in December. And so we had been doing work with equity for almost a year and a half before we- And so, we had been doing work with Equity for almost a year and a half before we actually started to use the tool. And what you'll see today is some of the results. And what we did is we started to refine and reflect our practices based on what you just asked about. What you have in your packet right now is a copy of two of the constructs. Those titles are Constructing and Enacting an Equity Vision, and one of them should say Collaborating with Family and Community. I'd like you to look over those briefly so you have an understanding of this rubric, and it will help you when you get a chance to see our results. Mr. Kravitz did a great job of explaining that each one of these constructs has three specific subheadings that goes along with it. But when you look at the rubric, there are a variety of different terms used in order to give you an opinion on where you believe we are at under constructing and acting an equity vision or collaborating with families and communities. So, if you'll just take a few seconds to look over that, I think it will help when you get a chance to see our results and why they fell into three specific subheadings.
Dr. Womack, so a moment ago, you said that there's ten practices total.
Correct.
This year, we're starting... We're focusing on two.
That's correct.
And then, next year, we'll select two others. Will we be revisiting next year these two? Or is it a cycle that changes? How does this... What's the larger picture for the ten practices?
I'll let my team speak on that.
Yeah, sure. So, what we wanted to walk you through today is actually a little exercise in how we also looked at the rubric, and then I'll be able to go back to the question. So, what we would like for you to do first is to ignore the exemplar statements that we told you about before, the ways to rate it. Because when we went through the community and asked them their opinion of where we are, they didn't have those statements there guiding them. We would like for you to take a self-analysis right now individually. If you would look through the four statements for constructing and enacting an equity vision, and then you're also going to do collaborating with families and communities. And you're going to think of yourself as an individual board member and think of yourself as a body of people who represent a board. And you're going to circle the four statements that you believe best describe your current practice. So, we're going to give you five minutes to do that. Do those two. Try your best not to look at the four statements at the top that says, "Oh, you're proficient in that," or "you're exemplar in that." Try to eliminate that from your view, if possible.
Look at the descriptors instead.
Yes, just look at the descriptors because those really will guide you to where you believe yourself to be, again, as an individual member of a board and then as a body. So, take the next five minutes to do that work.
And when the survey was committed to the individuals who completed the survey, they did not have this rating scale. So, they just took the individual statements. They chose four, and they found out... And then, we were able to use the rubric to find out where we fell as a district. So, they didn't have emerging equitable practices, proficient or exemplar. All they had were those statements. And then, we were to make the determination once we got the results back.
And this Hunt is going to keep time for us.
I've already begun.
Okay. She's very good with that.
It may be helpful to keep up on the screen for anybody in the audience to look at one of these.
You'll need your reading glasses.
If you could read it.
If I read that?
And while they're answering that for the people in the audience, I'll just read the guidelines for what they're answering. It says, "The practice focuses on your leadership team's capacity to develop a vision for equity in your school or district. An exemplar score means the leadership engages in an inclusive process with the entire school community, particularly those traditionally marginalized in educational processes, to develop an explicit vision of collective responsibility for the educational success of each and every student. Leadership also explicitly recognizes inequities in systems and nature rather than as something rooted in individual children or their families. By modeling the vision and action, your leadership team demonstrates high expectations for educators and students, utilizing inclusive, democratic decision-making processes and employing strategies for sustaining the vision and its enactment." So, what the board is doing right now is deciding where they are in that process of becoming an exemplar model of that by circling the four statements that describe where we currently are. And Lisa will have to use... Read the next one because even with my reading glasses, the print that we have is really small.
Yes, I will go ahead and read Collaborating with Families and Communities. "This practice describes the meaningful and ongoing relationships your leadership team has with parents, families, and community leaders, especially those from non-dominant communities, to centrally engage them in the educational process and school improvement for equity. An exemplary rating in this practice means your leadership team focuses..." I'm sorry, fosters ongoing, two-way communication to gain and develop and build deep understanding of the diversity of beliefs, values, practices, and cultural and social capital in the school community. The school is a part of the community and builds community capacity to be meaningfully and strategically engaged in enacting a collective equity vision."
Two more minutes.
Two more minutes.
Jody, are you still there? Is she there?
I am.
I was just thinking, you didn't... Do you have everything?
No. I have the presentation and everything that was attached to Board Doc.
Yep. Oh, good. It's just very hard to read on the screen because it's so tiny here.
And that's time. So, what we would have liked... What we'd like you to do is just with your elbow partners, because you have these three over here and three here. Did you find any similarities between what you circle? Were there areas where you guys were spot on with each other? And then, in a different conversation, in a different setting, we would also talk about where there are disparities. Did some people say, "Yes, we were here," and someone said, "Well, gosh, no. I believe that we're way over here," because it goes to what Mr. Posh was asking. In such a diverse district, you are going to find people who feel that equity is not an issue. And then, you'll find people who live and walk every day and say equity is a constant focus of what we're doing. Even in a school building, you may find people who have different degrees of what they believe to be equitable practices. And even in a classroom, you could find students who feel that their equity needs are being met, and you'll find students who feel completely invisible.
And they're sitting next to each other.
Exactly. Exactly.
So, what did we find out? Here are our results, which were quite surprising to some of us and to some extent not. When Mr. Posh talked about the variety and the diversity of our community, it was eye-opening. So, to give you a parameter in regards to when our survey actually went out. The survey was created on December 6, 2017. We closed the survey on February 28, 2018. We gave the survey as a link to all of our principals at the principals' meetings, and they distributed them to their staff members. So, we had about a two-month period in order to get responses. We had 104 responses on constructing and enacting an equity vision. What we got in regards to responses were this. In regards to inclusive practices under constructing and enacting an equity vision, it said, "The vision is developed based primarily on leadership's own views." It was a response that fell into the rubric area of little or no equitable practices, which was surprising to us, but at the same time, it gives us a chance to reflect on how did we disseminate our information? How do we go about participating in our training? Can we get better with that? Definitely, because when you have little or no equitable practices, that's a concern. Under collective ownership, it says, "Leadership does not examine whether non-dominant voices in the school community are heard, valued, or shaped the vision." That fell into the category of limited or no equitable practices as well. But also, under that construct, which was interesting, it said, "Leadership begins to develop teacher and staff collective responsibility for educational success of each student," and that was listed as an emerging equitable practice. Finally, under the third subheading, "Collective Responsibility." "Leadership has evidence that teachers and staff have collective responsibility for the educational success of each student regardless of background." And that was listed as a proficient equitable practices. You may ask how we got these results, or we tallied them. Here are the results of the survey. "We use the Likers Scale from strongly disagree to disagree, undecided to agree to strongly agree." And if you notice, "The vision is developed based primarily on leadership's own view." Was one of the highest rated, strongly or agrees. So, that's why we found ourselves in that area. Remember, folks did not have the information in order to say where that was a limited equitable practice, that was an emerging equitable practice. They only were able to fill out the survey. And once we got the results back, we were able to find based on the rubric where we were at collectively as a district. As we go down further, you'll find out our highest response rates are, "Leadership begins to develop teacher and staff collective responsibility." "Leadership has evidence that teachers and staff have collective responsibility." And "Leadership has evidence that students, teachers, staff, and families have collective responsibility for the educational success of each student regardless of background." So, this is how we got our results and found out where we were on the rubric. And once again, Mr. Posh, we were concerned with the number of survey results as well. And as a result of that, we'll talk about some practices that we're going to change in order to get more responses so we have a better understanding of where we're at collectively as a district, as well as how we can use this at the end of our Equity Sessions. Because in the past, what we've done with our Equity Training Sessions is just to give a scale of how you felt the presentation went. We didn't give them this tool. So, one of the things that we learned specifically is at the end of every one of our Equity Training Sessions, we need to make sure that our participants have a chance to use the LEAD Tool as opposed to dispersing it with our principals and asking them to get it out with their staff members. At the end of every session, we need to make sure everybody has access to this. We provided a survey, but that survey was not reflective of the LEAD Tool. And that was one of the lessons that we learned as a result of it.
Is there a way, Dr. Womack, to make sure that people aren't doing it more than once? I mean, I don't know that somebody would want to, but... Because if you're handing it out to different groups of people in various settings, you may have overlap of those people.
If it goes out as a Google Doc, then you can...
The software will tell you.
You can limit that to one respondent per email address. I have another question just about sort of the format of it. This is all leadership-focused? And I wonder, is the entire tool leadership-focused? Or are there components of it that are not? That are focused on teaching staff, students, you know, from those different perspectives?
That's a great question. Even as a Equity Task Force, we went back and forth about the definition of leadership because there was no guidance in the survey. And so, leadership really is what you deemed it to be. If students took this, they might have thought that leadership meant the teachers. If staff took this, they might have thought, "Oh, leadership means my building administrator." When I took it, I could have said, "Oh, it means central office." So, I'm thinking it was purposeful that leadership was not defined, especially when you start to think about equity, because then you start to get into those power modes. So, there was not a clear definition of leadership.
But I will add that part of this tool, the purpose, is to change cultures. And so, when you're thinking about how do you change your organization, it's usually top-down. And changing the practices that leaders are kind of in control of. So, if you take it from there, yeah, it is kind of in some ways approached that what can leadership do differently to make sure that the culture, the organization is aware of unequalable practices? And how can you change those in a systemic way? So, I think it's kind of implied there that it could be that way.
Especially when you think of the statement about our non-dominant voices brought to the table.
Exactly.
You absolutely see that leadership piece.
Right.
One of the challenges I see in looking at the tool is it is in adding on to this whole, you know, how do you define leadership? Is using the word evidence? I have... I mean, so basically, everything on the right, where we're proficient, where we understand, or exemplatory. I mean, I just couldn't go there for us. Because it's like, hey, I need to see the evidence, okay? I wanted... And I've seen so much evidence to prove that we're not there, which is why we're embarking on this. But it's just... It'd be curious to see what we define as evidence, just like you can define leadership. Rightly so. Teacher's a leader, community leader, you're, you know, leading this charge.
So, there is an opportunity when you use the tool to input practices. So, that's an opportunity for you to sort of lift up the things that you're doing and look at them again. So, I think that's what's so great about it, the responsiveness and the opportunity to say, "This is what we do. This is how we open our doors. This is how we welcome families. This is how we make decisions." And then, the resources that develop from that.
So, does this then turn into a conversation point for your team? So, when you go back to building or you try to revisit an issue?
It has actually become the crux of our work from this point on. It has made us take a step back and say, "Okay, maybe we started moving too quickly, and maybe we needed to quantify this differently in regards to the audience and participation." And so, what we've been doing collectively as a team is, well, we talk about what our next steps are in regards to where we need to go from here. Because the work itself is going to require us to have more people trained. It's going to require us to be intentional with our training in regards to how can we reach our students and our staff and the people who touch the work every day? We say the people that touch the work know the work. How can we get more teachers and staff embedded in this work in order to increase? Because one of the main goals is to close the academic achievement gaps. When that Equity Policy was developed, that was one of the main things that we looked at, that there are systemic practices that have been inequitable that have contributed to the current levels of performance. So, how can we start looking at our own self-identity in regards to our own beliefs? You know, one of the questions that we always ask, and we didn't use today with the board, is, you know, in 25 words or less, why do we have academic achievement gaps? And so, that takes people based on their own, where they were socialized, where they were raised, the schools that they went to, their own thoughts and perceptions, because we said we need to really start getting deeper into the self-identity work. And one of the blessings about the LEAD Tool is that once you plug the results in, they give you multiple resources that you can use collectively as a group and go back and enhance our level of training when we go back and start to work with our constituencies. So, that's one of the good things about this tool. And what we found out on our second construct is that the answers were a little bit more favorable. So, when we got the responses for collaborating with families and communities, what we found is in almost every situation, we had emerging equitable practices. For example, "Leadership has an open-door policy for families and is receptive to partnering with community organizations to address the needs of students. Leadership uses appropriate communication to share ways families and community partners can support the school's agenda at home or outside the classroom, supporting homework completion, fundraising, donating supplies, or providing social services." And I think a lot of that is due to the focus that we placed in regards to our Family Engagement Specialists and the intentional trainings that we did this year. Part of collaborating with families and community meant that we had specific cohort trainings for members of the community, the CHUHPTA, the Parent Ambassadors, or some of the other groups, Lisa.
I mean, the PTA Council was invited, but that also meant we invited all units to participate also.
Does it worry you, the number of responses has gone down between the first one and the second one? People are exhausted after they filled out the first one?
No, I think there are two different areas to examine. So, I personally wasn't discouraged. I don't think we were discouraged. It's two different areas.
Something that Beverly and I were talking about when we were looking through this one is, you know, this is our view out. It would be very interesting to get a view from outside on us. How does the community feel that we do partnering? You know, we can cite examples of what we do. Others outside might be able to cite examples of what we don't.
If I could interject to that, to that point, just a reminder, the reason that we're focusing on this work is because of the work we did with our strategic plan. So, this work emerged from the conversations with community and teach... All the community stakeholders, teachers, and students. So, they told us our first year in 2014, 15, that we in this district have some equitable practices that we needed to confront. That we had... That we had practices that were discriminatory against our kids. I mean, they said it blatantly. We can show you some of those statements that... I mean, they said it blatantly. We can show you some of those statements that they talked about. And it was surveys, some facilitated conversations. So it wasn't that this team said, wow, we're going to talk about equity and have equity as a goal. Those goals emerged from the work. So what we had to do was confront it and just be honest about, if the community said that we had some practices that we need to address and that we needed to do some systemic changes, then how do we do them in a fashion that everyone is on board? So as they stated, this work has been difficult, but it has been something that we decided that we were going to do because of that data that we received through that process. And as you can recall, we had a lot of participation during the community, I'm sorry, during our strategic planning process that was facilitated by a consultant. And that led the next year, Dan, we even, the board took another step and said, we stated that it wasn't enough that we had equity as our goal, because you think about educational approach. What do they mean by that? Well, the district had, it was one district, but we had very different systems within our one district. So you would walk into some of the classrooms and you say, something is not right here. And you were seeing the performances of students, that some students are performing higher than other students, but you had different opportunities for certain students that you didn't have all. So when you say equity empowerment and opportunities, how do we empower our organization, our students and our teachers, to make sure that we have equitable practices throughout? Not just in the classroom, but also the hiring of teachers, the hiring of administrators, how we were distributing our budget. So all of us in the organization have a role to play with equity. But primarily, as Dr. Womack stated, how can we make sure that we don't have one group of students that are outperforming another group of students? Because we, as a district, have not made sure that all of our students had equitable and equitable opportunities. So I think that's kind of the bottom line. Again, all this work emerged from the work of the community.
And I think it's a great question, I'm sorry, Dr. Womack, that it is a lens, right? To look at things through an equitable lens. So the more we have conversations, you begin to look at our practices and how we do. So we are getting the viewpoint of people who are participating and begin to looking at... You can examine it if you are aware of it. So I think this helps to go through the training, have the conversation, continue to be committed to the work, and including people in these opportunities to start looking at things through a lens of equity.
One of the things I would like to add with this as well, too, this is our primary equity analysis tool. But we always have gap closing, we have infinite campus, we have our state results, we have what is going on with unit assessments, our building-level action plans are broken down by subgroups when you put it into your BLT and TBT. So we're looking actively to see if students are growing, and we're closing those gaps in regards to current levels of performance. So there's ways that we triangulate this information. This is our primary tool, but at the same time, there's multiple resources that we use in order to see if we are making progress. Because the number-one goal of this is to close those academic achievement gaps in regards to what we do. And we definitely would like to see more responses, Mr. Posh. So we're trying to find a way to make sure we get that in place. This was our first run with this tool, and so we've learned a lot from this as a result of it. Let me go to the next slide.
So I think someone asked about constructs and how we decided what we were going to focus on. We strongly believe that we need to have a plan to guide this work. So last year, we actually set, and there are 10, eight constructs that we are going to look at, but we decided, okay, well, which one should we focus on? Again, this was before we took a deep dive into the work. So this was the very beginning part of it. And we broke down our plan into five years. You'll notice that years four and five, we did not put as much there because we knew, which was a good thing on our part, that the work should be guiding most of that instead of planning all the way out. So in year one, two, and three, we had two constructs apiece, but in four and five, we left those a little bit with just one. We have learned since then, and when we go to the next slide, we'll talk about that, that we have talked as a task force, and we've dialed back a lot. After doing a lot of sessions on identity, we realized that that was a huge area for our district that we needed to work through. So for visual learners like myself, we also color-coded everything so that we could keep track of what we were doing. So in the second column, that's just black and white, you have the LEED tool constructs one through five. So there are actually 10 constructs. We only got up to eight, which we had two left that we could have plugged into years four and five, but we chose not to. Anything that you see in year one, and yellow was a year one implementation. So for example, we had trained staff in the area of identity. Well, in year two now, we realized we did not get to all staff members. The identity sessions were heavily attended, though. We had a lot of impact on people. And we really realized that you could really do identity all year long. There are so many different layers of it. As a task force, and Ms. Hunt can speak to this, we probably a couple of months ago sat back and said, we need to halt the brakes and just focus on identity because there was such a huge outpouring from our staff that said, this is something that we want to continue to work on. But we did map out years two, three, four, and five. Anything that you see in blue is a year two plan. Again, orange is three, green is four, and purple is five. So this was the initial plan. We are flexible with this, though, and so we were able to dial back and change some of that.
One of the things that we did find out is as opposed to moving on to filing ethical and equitable behavior and allocating resources is that we wanted to really focus on constructing and enacting that equity vision as a result of the results, excuse me, as a result of the responses that we got, and also collaborating with families and communities in order to enhance that. Because there are a lot of different groups and constituencies that have feelings and beliefs about where they would like to work with us and how we can work with them. So if we can provide them with some of the resources with the self-identity, social identity groups, work that we do, building psychological safety so people feel comfortable enough in order to have open dialogue. Because a lot of times, when you're talking about equity and start talking about isms, people get very apprehensive, or they're either all the way to the right, all the way to the left, or they don't say anything. And so we're just like, how can we develop systems where people feel comfortable enough to have open, honest discussions about where they're at and their views and opinions on certain things about the academic achievement gaps, keeping that focused? And so we wanted to do that. And that was one of the results of the responses that we had. Here are the numbers for the training thus far this year in self-identity, which we call Equity Session Number One. We've had a chance to train over 208 participants, but there's much more work that goes along with that. We're going to the Deep Equity Institute on June 14th and 15th here in Cleveland as a staff collectively with the Equity Task Force, so we can get more training, so we can help facilitate better discussions in regards to that. Equity Session Number Two is called Stereotypes and Microaggressions. We deal a lot with implicit bias based on a cohort this year. Our professional development days, where we had, where you could choose the sessions that you went to. We had 73 participants. Lisa Hunt facilitates a lot of that training. And then the history of marginalization, where we go into how do we get to this point in regards to history of our country and achievement gaps and things of that nature? We've had about 81, excuse me, we have 81 people who participated in that training, and we are looking to fine-tune it and spend a lot more time in this area before we start talking about stereotypes and getting into this. Because if we don't get beyond identity, if we don't get people comfortable there, any discussions that we have from that point on can be skewed because people have to take a look at themselves and take ownership. How did I get to the point that I had these beliefs, these perceptions? How did my family influence me? What are my thoughts in regards to my experiences that have contributed to some of the things that we see going on? So those are our numbers.
I was going to jump in and say, what the numbers don't tell is the broad impact across the building, where you have paraprofessionals and security guards and teachers. So I think the good thing about it is it's not just an opportunity to bring in community, but create community. Because you have people who've been working together for years, who don't know very much about the cultural identity of the people that they worked with. And so it's an amazing opportunity to get past, which you said, Jim, how we have these sort of understandings of where we are, but to get past them and really figure it out.
How many employees are eligible? So we have, we had 208 of how many?
Wow, that's a big question.
Everybody's eligible.
When we have the, and Max, you might want to talk about the sessions, because you do most of the identity sessions. Who are the people who are participating? Because I don't know the exact numbers.
We had security, paraprofessionals, teachers. That's, you know, was basically what covered the sessions that I was in. And we had, I think, some, you know, some people at the board, too, as well. But they, those were the people that mostly attended those sessions. And overwhelmingly, from the feedback that we got, was that people wanted more. And that they kind of came to the realization that they didn't, you know, know the strength of, you know, some of these equitable practices that they can not only utilize in their classroom, but utilize with their colleagues on a day-to-day basis.
And I think that was one of the things that we learned, too. Because equity is an essential training in our district, we realized that we need to go out to people. Mrs. Gould has done an excellent job of providing a PD catalog that's unparalleled. I think there are so many offerings that equity, we were like, darn it. Like, we wish there wasn't so many, but there are, and people have an opportunity to go to the area they want. But because equity is essential training, we talked as a team about going out to the schools and going into somebody's environment. And that way, we're able to keep closer track of, okay, we checked off Noble Elementary School. We got Noble. We took them through phase one of identity. Now we're going to move on to the next school, which is why Dr. Womack spoke about building our team and making sure that we're trained properly to do that work. So that was some of the things that we talked about, well, who did we hit so far? We need a systematic approach in place to make sure that we're getting all of our employees of CHUH.
Everybody. First year, we targeted building leadership teams. We saw that that was pretty successful, but we didn't get a chance to get deeper into the work with them. So now that you had the session, so how do we follow up? How can we get deeper? And what did you do differently as a result? And what were your takeaways? And those are the things that we need to enhance collectively as a team. And I think going to buildings will allow us to meet people where they're at and then have more in-depth discussions about where we're going.
So, but you're an interventionist. How does this, this is what you're describing is a, this is a big job. And so this also takes days, takes you out of your classrooms and your work with our students. So how do you, how do you balance that? You know, because this could be a job for all of you by itself. And yet, you know, and so, so I'm thinking about this on, you know, on multiple levels. First of all, you know, this is, you know, an investment in our district and our, each other and our kids. But I'm also thinking about it on Tuesday with your caseload. And so I'd like to hear how you all balance this.
You know, for me personally, I, one, I'm committed to the community and to the students that I work with. And, you know, I've always wanted to eventually, obviously, get more involved in things like this. And I have little systems of efficiency that allow me to be efficient at my job as an intervention specialist, but also enable me, you know, the flexibility to be able to, you know, attend these. And our sessions are, especially the ones where I'm presenting, you know, are on professional development days. And our meetings are actually outside of our contract hours. But, you know, it's a commitment that, you know, I choose to make because, you know, I see the benefit that, you know, a lot of these practices can have. I see them in my own classroom, and then I see them, especially in, you know, what some of my colleagues have been exposed to so far and some of the things that they have done.
And I would say as a building administrator, the great thing is that there are other people who can pick up the work when you can't do it. And so I know that Mrs. Hunt, Ms. Hunt has been to, her and Dr. Womack have done several trainings that I was like, oh, I didn't even know you guys did a training because there was no way I was going to lead my building to do that. Which is, I think, the beauty of our team is that we have people who are able to step out and go to different trainings. A lot of our work sometimes is crossed over, so we go to the ESC for training, which is free. We do different work on achievement gap that way, and then we bring it back as a task force. But then we also share that with the equity team members as well.
So it sounds like there's actually two things happening. We're working on leadership and top-down change of culture, but we're also looking at trickling up from teacher practices in the classroom and having that also affect the culture, building-wide, district-wide. But, so you have to sort of do it in both directions.
I think it's worth talking about the families and communities also. It's a very important piece. And that if you are supporting your schools, you have to do it in a way that is equitable. So again, you have to have the conversation. So it's an important component, and it is part of it. So I look at the work that I do as integrated. So I'm sort of the one who is available, because I don't have a classroom. So I get the opportunity to connect and do it during PD day in a way that's a little bit different. But I think all of it, when you talk about how communities support our, and what we push in and what we expect in, who we are as a community, I think we have to continue to look and self-reflect. And so I think we're figuring it out, but I think it's important to be committed to, and all of us are. I'm sorry, all of us are. And those not here, but we are.
Do you provide this training, is it building by building? Or, I mean, how do you provide this training? Or do you just do it during PD periods?
That was our question for this year. Because it's essential, which means that it's in the contract that this is something that the district has said is important, we really focused in on next year, we have to go out to the buildings and say... So if they came to me and said, Ms. Coleman, we want to provide your building with equity training. What day works on your calendar? Will it be after school? Or will it be in lieu of a staff meeting? How will you do that? And then we sit with the principals and figure that out and get that on the calendar so that we can say that we were able to meet the needs of that staff. I can speak for Noble that I was able to do some of the training with my staff, but our BLT also was trained by the equity team. And I did not work with my school on that piece intentionally because I felt that another trainer should have stood in. But I do, I can tell you that once you've been through the identity piece, you can't say you haven't went through it. There are certain things that you are opened up to, and you're very aware of how you refer to students. So, you know, it's not a special education student, it's a student with a disability. And so we try to do first person. And once you have that knowledge, it's very hard to say, I don't know anymore. You can say, this makes me uncomfortable, but you can't say you don't know.
So you know how you say, well, you know, but you really don't know? Or you, now you know so much, you realize you don't know enough? So one of our board goals is to go through, and, you know, maybe it's just old school from various projects I've had, but diversity training, okay? Which is this, I mean, and I think REI is going to be doing our presentation. But I'm real eager to sort of understand more about what I don't know. I mean, and I think, you know, the board is committed to this, too. And, you know, hopefully, if people can see that, you know, we that knew this was an important thing, that put together this whole policy at Dr. Dixon's and her staff's recommendation. I mean, I just think that everybody needs to do this. So if we can set an example and learn from it and see where our shortcomings are, because they're out there, I know they're out there, you don't want to admit it.
We're Americans.
Well, you know, one thing I'd add, and maybe you guys could talk this briefly about, and you guys mentioned in central training, the union stepped up and added this in our last negotiated agreement that it is one of eight essential trainings that all of our staff can go through. So I think that commitment from our union is there as well. And then the team is just more than the four, too, so you have some other teachers that are on the team, too. Yeah, so I think...
Here's a slightly tangential question. We heard a presentation about the curriculum adoption process and, you know, how we're trying to make sure that our curriculum is standardized and does what it needs to do for our students. Is equity of representation and cultural relevance a factor in our choices of curriculum?
I think you had that as one of your slides when you did that presentation.
We asked that question, I think, at Noble when we looked at Super Kids. We asked that question, I think, at Noble when we looked at superkids. We were like, does everybody, do all our kids see themselves when they go through the superkids? And they actually do. So we, um, went through, the teachers looked at it quickly, said, Ms. Coleman, there are actual different races in superkids. Um, some, there's actually a student with a disability in superkids. Um, I'm not able to speak as closely about ready gen. There were some things about ready gen and we were like, we want to see more of this and that. But what I loved about it is that the teachers were asking that. We, um, had started talking about our, do all of our students feel accounted for? And do they feel seen in our school? And that was one of the questions that we had to ask ourselves, when they, when they look in their books, do they see themselves? So I think it's a conversation that is definitely starting to be had. But as far as superkids and those characters grow up with the students, so in kindergarten or small, and then in first grade, the student becomes a year older. I think in, um, as far as superkids goes, that, that does happen.
And then, you know, there's visual representation at the younger ages, but then when the students get older, cultural relevance is slightly more nuanced than that. You know, there's a whole lot more, um, deeper levels that are involved in the curriculum. And so, you know, that gets, it's a bit harder to make sure that we're including our student body.
Part of the, uh, the work with Minority Student Achievement Network and working with Bob and the Curriculum Development, I mean, Curriculum Instruction Departments, they provide us a variety of different resources that we're able to share with our Curriculum Instruction Department in order to say that we have some things that are available for our students in order to use, not necessarily supplements, but other things in order to support. And I believe our Curriculum Instruction Department sits down collectively and they look at the curriculum that we purchased and they put it out with staff members to pilot. And they have a variety of different staff members who pilot material, so that therefore they can look, um, in depth. And what we're believing as a group collectively is that the more we can get into the self-identity, um, the deeper people will start looking at a culturally relevant curriculum. And so therefore start asking the questions. Uh, I think you don't get the right answers if you don't write, ask the right questions. And, and I think that as we get deeper into that, that will help. But they've done a tremendous job of trying to ensure that everything we have is culturally relevant, because we have to look at our customer. And we have a variety of different customers, but we have a lot of students, uh, minority descent.
Yeah, I mean, we've got five thousand of them and we gotta figure out what it is that's appropriate for everybody.
Yeah, and I would like to jump in here, this is Jody, and I'm still hanging on the phone. First of all, I want to thank the staff for, um, bringing this, uh, presentation to us, which is really important work, and I'm very glad that we as a board are going to be, um, participating as well. I just want to ask the question of, I just attended, uh, several sessions on equity at the NSBA conference, the National, um, School Boards Association Conference. And I want to be sensitive to the fact that are we including LGBT in this as well? I know it's, this effort is primarily aimed at students of color, but, uh, best practice is to make sure that you're including your LGBT students in your equity, um, your equity policy and in your equity, um, training. And I just want to see if that's on our radar to do as well.
So Jody, one of the things that we did, and Lisa can speak on this as well too, is we recognize we had a variety of constituencies in our community. Um, and so what we've tried to do is provide those cohort one, two and three trainings, so people can specialize in those areas that they feel most comfortable with. So as we provide them with the tools, they can go back into their communities that they feel most comfortable with in order to provide those type of trainings, so that we give them tools that, that can be used, whether it be age, whether it be gender, whether it be race, um, whether it be economic status, that they are able to take back and, and utilize that collectively. We have focused primarily on closing the academic achievement gaps of students of color. But what we did strategically this year is bringing a variety of different people and left it open and say, hey, come on in for these trainings. And the more in-depth you get with this, the more you can, uh, focus on those areas and give them tools and resources. We have a tool, uh, for the North Cackalackman School District that has over eighty different videos, probably about seventy different articles, and provides us with PowerPoint presentations on implicit biases, stereotype threats, gender, age, race, et cetera, that are accessible for anyone who wants to become a part of our group. So I guess that is a roundabout way of saying, that's how we've been addressing that, because there's been so many different, um, constituencies within our district.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I think those were questions.
More questions.
Well, thank you.
And folks here are our, our members. Dr. Dixon, Mrs. Bukovich, who teaches a class on the dates, most of the time we're doing our meetings. Mrs. Coleman's here, Dr. Ford from John Carroll, um, Dr. Jenkins, who has his kids on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Mr. Travis, who really stepped up, he has a new baby at the house. Melissa's working on her PhD now, as a result of it, we've lost her. Cheryl couldn't make it. I think Sean has just been overwhelmed with everything that's going on, him saying end of course exams. But what we found is that we needed to train more people. So we have about six or seven other people who've joined our team. Um, Melinda Stoykoi, who's a counselor at Fairfax. Uh, Tamara Heldman, GIS teacher. We have Eric Cohen, a gifted intervention specialist who teaches over at Boulevard at Fairfax. Fairfax, uh, Lorna Askew, um, over at the middle school. Um, Eric, Lorna, Yolanda Harris. So they've all joined our team in order to help facilitate this work, because it can be taxing. Some of these conversations that we have in regards to the areas that we address, um, can be emotionally charged. And, and you really have to have a heart for this work. It's not for everybody. But if you want to do it, uh, there are tons of resources out there. And we're pleased with the additional people who joined our team in order to help us with this. And we continue to recruit.
And I would say, um, yeah, we're looking around. Don't sit too close, you'll get, but I think one of the things that, um, we have to think about, because the work is big, is that we are all going through transformation and that the work is transformational. So we have, once we put those lenses on, I think we want to include people in it and make sure that we all are upstanders and, and, and having conversations and getting the tools to be able to do them appropriately and effectively.
Well, I just have to say, I appreciate the work that you all, um, have been doing. And I remember when it got started, when Dr. Dixon first came to the district and we were talking about our equity policy. And, um, I, I commend you all and I just hope you can continue. And if there's anything, I think that the board that we can do to help support you all and to work with you, let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
This is the sort of, this is the sort of work that makes me most proud to live in this community.
Same here, Dan.
Well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I will always motion to adjourn.
Second.